July 16th, first we start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Do we have a roll call?
Yes, good evening, and I'd like to welcome the three new planning commissioners to the dais tonight, Jim Yakaponi, David Roof, and John Dugan, and now I'll begin with the roll call. David Roof. Jim Yakaponi?
Here.
And am I pronouncing that correctly? Okay, great. And John Dugan? Vice Chair Bergman is out this evening with an excused absence, and Chair Bradley.
Present.
Next, we have a session on public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Section 54954-2. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to the staff for their attention, or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or fuller report. First up is approval of the minutes. I will move for approval of the minutes, since I'm the only one that was at the meeting.
And through the chair, it's my understanding, and the city attorney, I think, can confirm this, but even though the rest of the three commissioners that are on the dais tonight were not at the last planning commission meeting, there's no limitation to accepting the minutes and taking action on them, even though you weren't here.
Yeah, that's correct. The minutes are just the official record of the commission, so even if you weren't present, you have the authority to approve those minutes.
I second.
I think for the record, Commissioner Roof beat you to that one. So I'll begin with a roll call. David Roof. Jim Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes. This is unanimously with one vacant. Next is a public hearing. And if you intend to speak, you need to fill out one of these. They're in the corner at the back of the room, and hand it to staff or myself. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendation. The applicant will make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in a written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public's hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak, since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. Thank you. We have a staff report.
My name is Jeff Ballton. I'm a contract planner. I've been working with the city for a little over a year now. The project before you tonight is the Winding Way Master Development Plan. So, in your staff report packet, there are lots of different resolutions, lots of different entitlements, but the essential of it is the applicant is ultimately looking to develop five single-family houses on five parcels, as well as do roadway construction improvements on an existing portion of Winding Way that is currently unimproved. So, of the resolutions, a number of them are for recommendations to the city council, the first of which is resolution related to SEQA, which is an addendum, and the second of which is related to the master development plan, and that is for the master development plan, lot line adjustment, and tree removal permit. And then a number of items are just for the planning commission to make actions on, and that is for road abandonment, general plan consistency finding, and then the last two, the master grading plan and the grading and dirt haul certificate, and these will ultimately be contingent upon the city council approving the master development plan, the lot line adjustment, and the tree removal permit. And just to try to organize these a little bit, of the entitlements, one of them, the lot line adjustment, is associated more with the master development plan, and then the other four, the road abandonment, the tree removal permit, the grading and dirt haul, and the master grading plan, those are more associated with the street improvement plans. Really what the applicant is looking to do in the near term is to develop the roadway, and in order to do that, he needs these entitlements, and then if planning commission and city council were to approve those, then he would ultimately need Public Works approval of the street improvement plans. So here's the project site, just to give you a little reference in relation to the rest of the city. Here's an up close, shown in red. You see there's little portions of the project sticking out. It would connect to Chesham Avenue, and it also connect to Winding Way up on the upper end. It's not quite easy to tell from this photo, but there's a lot of topography in the site. It's quite steep slopes. It's in the hillside overlay district. There's also a creek, I'll point out here in a little bit. Here's a site photo. This is actually looking up, looking down from the top portion. This is potentially where a house would go. And you can see the existing dirt road, which they would be looking to improve in the background. And then, again, the dirt portion of the pathway that they'd be looking to improve as a roadway. So this project has a lot of history to it. So, back in 2004, they had pre-zoning approved, and what that was for was because the project site was outside of the city limits, and so before a project site can be annexed into city limits, first it needs to be pre-zoned. And so it was pre-zoned for low, single-family RS3. And then, also in 2004, a mitigated negative declaration was adopted, and then soon after, a settlement agreement took place with the Devonshire Canyon Open Space Alliance. And a number of additional conditions came out of that settlement agreement, and one of which was that a final focused environmental impact report be prepared to supplement the mitigated negative declaration. And that was done in 2009, along with the city actually annexing the project site into city limits. And then just in January of last year, the applicant submitted their master development plan application. So here you see one of the sheets from the master development plan. You see here there are four lots on the inside of the right-of-way, and then one lot to the exterior. This shows just proposed future, potential future footprints of houses. Ultimately, if the applicant were to get all these entitlements, they would still need to come back to planning commission for a design review approval of the actual houses. This shows also the creek just above all the houses, as well as a 25-foot setback requirement from that creek. And this is a little bit easier to see, where you can see the actual houses and... yeah. Community outreach, so notice was provided to all property owners and occupants within 300 feet of the site. A community meeting was held by the applicant in March of this year, and we received a number of correspondence from neighbors, two letters of support, three emails with concerns regarding the dirt haul route, which we'll go into later in this presentation, and then four other emails as well. And among those concerns, one of which was the gate location. One of the neighbors currently in county jurisdiction is requesting that they move a proposed gate to within city limits, which would be further from their property. Most of the project site is within city limits, but one spur of the project proposed roadway is in county jurisdiction, and so they're requesting that the gate be relocated. And so we're currently exploring that with other city departments to confirm that that does not raise any concerns. Another concern was with regard to creek crossing. Specifically shown crossing two in the staff report packet is proposed for a culvert, and a couple of neighbors were concerned in terms of impacts to the creek and the riparian habitat, and wanted the option to be explored for a bridge instead of that. Another neighbor was concerned with retaining wall heights, and we actually had quite a bit of back and forth with the applicant on this. Ultimately, there were feasibility concerns. We were looking at doing terracing instead of having one tall retaining wall, doing terracing with multiple shorter, but due to the width of the right-of-way as well as high steep slopes, that looked to be infeasible. So one way we looked to address that was at least to improve the material to split-faced concrete block, instead of one just smooth concrete wall. And then a couple other concerns, that the final focused environmental impact report mitigations be referenced more thoroughly in the grading and dirt haul certificate and the grading resolution, and staff is comfortable to make those changes. They're already, just want to note, they already are referenced in the second resolution regarding the master development plan. And then also another couple of concerns for the street lighting. One neighbor wished that the, no street lighting be provided, and that construction hours be limited to Monday to Friday. So for the environmental review, as I mentioned, a mitigated negative deck was adopted in 2004, and then due to the settlement agreement, they needed a final focused environmental impact report thereafter. That FFEIR essentially was just for the biological resources portion, and specifically, it looked at impacts to the dusky-footed wood rat and the bush mallow plant. That FFEIR then incorporated by reference all the other chapters from the M&amp;D except for the biological resources. So together, they still formed the SEQA document. And then just recently, we prepared an addendum, and what the point of that was, was because the final focused environmental impact report was adopted in 2009, which was a number of years ago, and so we prepared the addendum to look at if any changes to the project occurred, substantial changes, if any substantial changes to circumstances, as well as to if there were any new information that needed to be analyzed. And ultimately, the addendum found that there were no significant changes to the project, and that would not result in significant environmental impacts, impacts not already assessed in the final focused environmental impact report. A number of other agencies were required for their review for this project, particularly the first three, the U.S. Army Corps, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and California Regional Water Quality Control Board. All three of those were required due to impacts to the creek. As outlined in the staff report, they are the crossing number two, and crossing number one, they're looking to install culverts which impact the creek, and so they have reached out to those agencies over the past few years, and have received their consent with conditions. And then finally, the County of San Mateo, as I mentioned, one portion of the roadway is in their jurisdiction, and so all of the proposed entitlements for city review are really for that portion of the project within city limits. That little spur of roadway that's in county jurisdiction is per their review. And this is a figure from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and this shows mitigation areas. Areas shown with the letter A and B are areas to be protected, as well as the purple area for the riparian. So those are all areas that the applicant cannot disturb. All right, so part of the entitlements is a lot line adjustment. No new parcels would be created, but they're looking to shift parcel lines, and this is in order to comply with, back in 2004 when the pre-zoning was done, one of the conditions was to have 20,000 square foot minimum lot sizes. And so the purpose of this lot line adjustment would be to help achieve that in conjunction with right-of-way abandonment. So as you see here, there are three shaded areas, and those would be abandoning portions of the right-of-way to each of the parcels to help them achieve that minimum 20,000 square feet. But I also want to mention that the right-of-way abandonment is not just those three portions. The city also owns an easement for that right-of-way, and the city is looking to abandon that easement for the entire right-of-way for the portion within city limits, and that's for the purpose that then it'll be up to the applicant. It'll be owned by them, and they'll be required to maintain it. One of the other entitlements is the grading and dirt haul certificate. So just for the roadway, they're looking to do cut of 3,375 cubic yards, but they would use that same amount as fill, and essentially, all the cut would just be utilized as fill on-site. However, they would still have 25 truck trips, round truck trips for debris associated with roadway improvements. And as part of that, there is a haul route, and that was noticed to all of the neighbors along that route, and we, as I mentioned, we received a number of concerns. The original proposal ultimately went from Chesham to Windsor Drive, then to Torino Drive, and that raised a number of concerns. Apparently, some time ago, a large truck had actually plowed into a house right around that intersection of Torino and Windsor. Oh, twice, twice. And so based on that feedback, we talked with Public Works, and it looks like the other revised haul route at the bottom of the screen could work just as well, and hopefully address a number of those neighbors' concerns. It would still use Chesham, but then it would go to Windsor, and then to Devonshire, and then to San Carlos to avoid that. The master grading plan, this is something more peculiar to this particular project. Based on previous approvals, they required that a master grading plan be done that essentially looked at the grading impacts of the entire project, including the roadway and the houses. And so we've already discussed the roadway grading. The houses, they would be looking to have 1,625 cubic yards of cut, and that would all be hauled off-site. And then this shows you sections for how the houses would fit into the hillside. The one on the right is how four of the houses would be done. You see the garage is on top, connecting to the roadway, and then the house is below it, and that would have lesser impacts. And then the one on the left is, one of the houses would be designed in that manner. One of the other resolutions is protected tree removal. 20 trees would be removed, and this is just for the roadway project. 10 of these are protected, specifically they're coastal live oaks and they're heritage trees, and so within the conditions of approval, the applicant would be required to replace all 10 of those with replacement trees, meeting city codes. And there's an ARBIRS report that's included in the package. All right, with all of that, just to reiterate, actions before the commission, two of which are recommendations to city council regarding SEQA, master development plan, lot line adjustment, protected tree removal permit, and then planning commission actions, road abandonment for general plan consistency finding, master grading plan, and grading and dirt haul. And then we do have all the formal motions available, if any planning commissioner would like to entertain those, and that wraps up my presentation.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there any questions of the staff from the commission?
And through the chair, I know there's been a number of public comments, or requests to speak, slips submitted to you, and so one option the commission could take is to hold their questions if they should choose to wish, or choose to hear from the community first. And in addition, I'd just like to mention that the applicant and his engineer are here tonight, as are some of staff from different city departments. We have Chris Valley from the Building Division. I know Grace Lee is here tonight. She is our city engineer, available for any questions, so I just wanted to make sure that you understood who was available tonight to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Michael Chilcote. My partner, Ronald Grove, and I are the two principals and current owners of the project in front of you this evening. Together, we have over 50 years combined residential construction and development experience. The site, as you've seen, is an approximate three-and-a-half acre natural canyon, but it is in an extreme neglected condition. There is an approximately 2,200-foot gravel road, starting at Chesham, ending at the improved portion of Winding Way, which has gone unmaintained for decades, resulting in an unusable, frankly, dangerous condition via erosion in several locations and an extreme washout location, making it difficult to navigate on foot, let alone a vehicle. These multiple erosion points have contributed to sediment flows into downstream waterways and stormwater debris flows across the intersections of Chesham and Winding Way for many years. The site's current status, therefore, does not allow for vehicular traffic, safe pedestrian access, or fire department access. The site has recently been a target of trespassing graffitiers, and has become overgrown with flammable vegetative material. I and many others are concerned that a fire in this canyon would have unimpeded access to multiple ridge lines and homes by denying feasible access to our local firefighters. This proposed project, under consideration this evening, provides benefits to the city and the community at large via the construction of a new road, properly engineered to support vehicular traffic for the future residences, as well as fully supporting the needs of the fire department and safety vehicles. Of course, this road makes possible its five lots to also become much-needed future housing on the peninsula. Further, alongside the road will be a generous three-foot-wide pedestrian path, providing convenient and safe walking access for the future residents and the neighboring community at large. Assuredly, there will be individuals speaking out against this project this evening, principally perhaps the DCOSA, but my partner and I wish to assure the commissioners that we worked long and hard with your planning staff and other pertinent city San Carlos agencies, as well as the required state agencies of Fish and Wildlife and the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and at the federal level, the Army Corps of Engineers, to meet every one of their requirements, as well as fully satisfying or exceeding the terms of the 2004 suit settlement agreement. In conclusion, we think this project would be a beneficial, and eventually even, eventually even, a welcome addition to the Devonshire Canyon. Thank you.
The commission have any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, we'll move ahead to public comments. Again, let me remind you, if you wish to speak, to get one of these forms in the corner. We have over a dozen speakers, so we'll be limited to two minutes each speaker. Your hand was up, sir. Your hand was up, sir.
Did you ask a question?
Not yet. But you will have your chance, I guarantee that. First is Sandra Boyer. Are you here, Sandra? Thank you.
Hi, I will have to be talking very fast to get two minutes in. I'm opposed to the project as it has been laid out. Actually, not the project, but the route of the project for many reasons. I live on Chesham. Chesham has several sections of a 12-foot paved road width. We have parking on both sides of the street. This road is used by people walking dogs, walking kids to school, and residents recreating. It would create a very dangerous situation for us to have all of this equipment. I mean, we're going to have graders and loaders and dirt haulers and cement trucks for foundation work, lumber trucks for framing roofing materials, supplying plumbing and electrical infrastructure, painting, flooring appliances, countertops, sinks, toilets, you know, everything that would have to go into getting things to the site. Chesham is a substandard street. It is a road, it is not a street. This doesn't work for us. And I don't know how the city can mitigate the concerns that we have over this large truck traffic. There are some other questions we have concerning construction parking by the workers, should not be on Chesham at all. There isn't any parking anyway. That would be even more dangerous. So maybe staging the construction workers on Devonshire and having a shuttle drive them up to the site, something like that might be better. Because we really can't have it there in the canyon with a 12-foot road width. Let's see, there were other suggestions about maybe reducing truck traffic to between 10 and 2 o'clock to reduce the impact on neighborhood commuting and school times. I guess that's about it. The first proposed route was horrible. The second one is a little better, but it's still using Chesham and parts of Windsor that, again, have no sidewalks. And people use these roads to walk. I mean, that's all we have. So, thank you, those are my concerns.
Congratulations, you did it in two minutes. Good job. Next is David Burchell. Burnell, sorry.
Thank you. My name is David Burnell, and I live at 260 Windsor Drive. And it was my home that was run into by the trucks. We were fortunately on vacation, and our poor neighbor Ron had to call us. And I had the unfortunate task of calling us and explaining to us that our house had been, a third of that had been leveled by a large gravel truck. I do appreciate the fact that you've recognized the inherent dangers and changed the route away from Torino and away from Melendi. That was very dangerous, and I was very concerned. I'm finally sleeping with one eye closed again. So I do appreciate that you did take that into consideration. And I agree with the lady who just spoke. I think maybe limiting the construction to times when there aren't children on the road between 10 and 2 would be prudent. I also think, as a 45-year supply chain guy, I had my own equipment. I had large trucks. Sometimes it's beneficial to split loads, keep the loads smaller. I know it's difficult to impede commerce that way. I know you guys probably don't want to hear this, but the reality is, you keep loads smaller, you keep them safer. And if you're in communities where the roads are so tight and there are so many people walking around with dogs and kids, it makes sense to start splitting loads and keep the big equipment off the road. But that's it, thank you again.
Thank you. You did it in less than two minutes, David. Michael Campbell is next.
Thank you, commissioners, staff. I'm a resident of the Devonshire Canyon area. I won't repeat everything I included in my letter to you today. I just tried to pour through the 100-and-something-page report. Bit overwhelming. In general, I oppose the project as I do not see how it conforms to the general land use, Sections 9 and 10 regarding open space and riparian habitat. If you look at the map, the various maps provided, as well as the photos, you can see that this development area abuts one of the last remaining open space areas in the city. And it's unclear, per the general plan, if the city has pursued what is in the plan with respect to acquiring additional open space specifically in the general, specifically in the Devonshire Canyon area. So if staff could address that at some point, that would be, that would be good. Assuming the project goes forward and the city does not acquire this as additional open space, conformance to the settlement plan of 2004, 2009 seems to be costly for the city. I'm not sure how that enforcement is going to be done and what the costs of the city are, and that's a bit of a concern to me. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments, Michael. Debbie Friedman. Friedman. Got it.
So we are at 203 Chesham. We are at the gate right where the project's going to start. When the project started in 2004, it was about 20 houses, and we were against it. Now it's down to five, and we are actually for it. Two main reasons we are for it is that fire road is really bad right now. If we have a fire like the Santa Rosa fires, our house is the first to go. No cars can get up there, no fire truck can get up there. It's really, as everybody else said, it's been not maintained at all. Also, we now have graffiti there, and I'm going to leave this picture. If this graffiti was anywhere on San Carlos Avenue or Alameda to Las Pogus, city of San Carlos or county would be there cleaning it. No one's doing anything about it. My husband's emailed, and the county's saying it's the city, and the city's saying it's the county. And that's another reason why we want this to go through. Lastly, the excuse about these rats. We have many neighbors that hire pest controls to kill these rats. And these same neighbors are saying, must protect it because of the rats. Well, you can't have your cake and eat it too. These rats are devastating to housing, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. And next is Ron Starica.
Good evening, my name is Ron Starica, 125 Wingate Avenue here in San Carlos. First, let me just make a comment about that road. Yes, it's in terrible condition. It was a county road, well-maintained up until about 15 years ago. The county left it go. The city annexed the property, the city let it go. So it was a passable road for fire trucks up until about 15 years ago. And so it falls on the responsibility of local government for not keeping it up in the past. So I've been informed by planning, this project's middle is pretty much a done deal. So I'm not going to waste too much of your time tonight. I hope everyone in the commission has had the opportunity to actually walk the site. If so, you've seen the undeveloped land situated within a deep canyon with a seasonal stream. The building sites are on a very steep slope. I don't think anybody's disputing that. In a very high fire zone area per CAL FIRE on their map. It's just a sort of environment where natural disasters, such as landslides and fires, occur. So the developer is driven by profit, and I understand that. What I don't understand is why the city allows and encourages buildings, or building in marginal areas such as this. I'm sure there's some economic or legal reason why, but it just flies in the face of logic. Now, assuming this meeting is just an opportunity to discuss details about the project, I do have two requests. First, there be little or no street lighting included in the development. None of the surrounding county neighborhoods have lighting, and Hyde Park has very low output street lamps. This will not be your typical city street, so please keep in mind the light pollution for the entire canyon residents. Second, due to the unique location of the development, restrict days of allowable construction to Monday through Friday. The work will be done in a canyon where noise will be greatly amplified. Currently, there is very little ambient noise heard within the entire area. The construction activities will, by necessity, be very loud. So I request that you give canyon residents just a few quiet days during the week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next is Mr. Phil Monahan. See, I told you to get your chance.
I had a question. Phil Monahan, I live at 164 Chesham. It's in the horseshoe bend in the road, right next to the... Is Chesham Avenue going to be Chesham Boulevard? Is it going to be a paved road from that horseshoe bend up into Winding Way? Hello? Who's the guy that's building this? Can you answer my question? Are you paving the road? All the way down to Chesham? Chesham Boulevard, okay. The camel's got his nose under the tin. Okay, we know what's going to happen. I'd like to speak on behalf of the trees, who cannot speak for themselves. I don't see how protected tree and removal comes in the same oxymoron. This arborist is going to cut down a 33-inch diameter California oak tree. That's criminal. You can build around trees. Elmer Smith, who built my house, friends of his back there. I have three oaks within 10 to 15 feet of my walls. And I'm real glad that he did that, because it makes Chesham Avenue like you're going through the country. We have a tree tunnels. But it's easier to clear cut, like you did in Hyde Park. That's easy, just cut them all down, and we can pull our bulldozers right up. That makes it easy. A little more expensive to save trees. This arborist report is disgusting to me. You know, there weren't any rules about saving trees when Elmer saved trees. But he did it for aesthetics. He did it for other reasons, like quality of life in the canyon. I'd like to speak now about the wildlife that live in the canyon. Enough, that's what they say. And now for the people that live in the canyon that saw Hyde Park and were assessed for flood control caused by the development. You familiar with the Pogus Creek Assessment District that you all pay on your property taxes every year? We're paying for their development. Now, why can't these people pay that assessment off? There is a dam right below where they're building. Do they get just to use of that dam for free? We're paying for that dam, with 6% interest, I might add. I'm opposed to the project, obviously, because it erodes the quality of life in our canyon. And it's only the beginning.
Thank you, sir. Next, Max Reinhardt.
Good evening, commissioners. I came here tonight to speak in support of the project. I've sold a couple of properties. I don't live in the area. I don't have any opinion on trucks or other things driving in and out. I have sold a few places on Winding Way in the past five to seven years. Noticed there and other pockets of Devonshire Canyon, you have real issues, most of Devonshire Canyon being county. But Winding Way, as it is, has an issue with vehicles and access. I think having a road as such to provide additional safety vehicle access, fire trucks, ambulances, things of that sort, would be a great added benefit to the safety of everyone who's living in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lily Chang.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lily Chang. I live at 420 Winding Way, which is where Winding Way ends currently, and the unpaved portion begins. Today, I'm going to focus on the resolution to abandon the roadway. As Ron had pointed out, Winding Way has been a public road right-of-way since 1926. And we don't believe that the city should abandon that and make it a private road just for the development of this project. We don't think it's required to make the roadway private, as mentioned by various other people. This is a dangerous fire area, and it is in good, a lot of need for better access. Making the road private would imply that there will be multiple gates, locked gates, that would only allow emergency vehicles, but not allow residents to access in the case of emergencies, including earthquakes or landslides where people might actually need to get out of the canyon. So I'd like to just propose that we, if you do go forward with the project, that you abandon the portions of the Winding Way that is needed for the lot line adjustments, but not the roadway itself. This is also, the creation of a private road seems to go against the San Carlos general plan's guiding principles to connect our communities, including using interconnected road layouts, as well as building social, physical connections between communities. And I would also like to say that the private roadway creates these access gates. It's really unclear why there should be gates along this road when it's been a public right-of-way for 92 years. I understand the city has built an access gate in accordance to the settlement agreement that was made, but it does not say in any way that those gates should be locked. In fact, it is designed to limit through traffic. But the roadway was dedicated by the entire subdivision of Devonshire Number 4, which includes all of the properties, so long Winding Way, Chesham, and Windsor. So we are actually one community. And it was dedicated as a complete loop to connect the community and really feel like there is no through traffic in our neighborhood. It's a very winding road. If anyone is driving through, it's because they are lost and they're in need of help. And so I think that for us and this greater community, there's not necessarily a lot of awareness that this is going to create a private road, and it's going to have gates around this new community. And so if you do adopt this proposal, we propose that the resolution not abandon the roadway and keep it a public road. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Fedor.
Staff. I'm David Fedor, I live at 420 Winding Way with Lily, my wife. We've discussed with staff a number of issues around the project. It's complex, so just have a few more things to talk about here tonight. I want to second what Lily said about the road. Everyone in the area's deed for 100 years has had Winding Way as a public right-of-way. And that was accepted by the County of San Mateo and signed by the San Carlos Town Engineer in 1926. So that is known, that that loop exists. This is not building a new driveway to a new private development. This is a public right-of-way that is being proposed to be privatized for the benefit of the applicant, the new homeowners. But it's not necessary to do so in order to build the homes. Now, I know that there's some concern, I think, from City Public Works, that they don't want to pay for the maintenance of the road. But I just point out that it's possible. In fact, the applicant is burdened by requirement for the homeowners to create an assessment district to pay for the road maintenance. It does not mean that it has to become a private road. It can remain a public right-of-way while the homeowners pay for that maintenance. Additionally, the city did an economic analysis in 2009 as they acquired Jufa Annexation, in which they estimated net benefits to the city of $27,000 annually ongoing from the development of these new homes. That's probably double that in the current market. And Public Works estimated $10,000 a year in savings from not having to dredge the channel as much anymore after the development. So that's at least $50,000 a year of net benefit coming to the city of San Carlos if they approve this project. It would be very reasonable to spend some of that on the upkeep of a road, which would significantly increase connections throughout the community. And this has been spoken to by a number of applicants already. This used to be a connected road. Two other quick points, retaining walls. Jeff mentioned retaining walls. This project, you can't see it in the illustrations from the applicant, unfortunately, but it is proposing 10- to 12-foot retaining walls running for hundreds of feet in numerous locations throughout the road. Requirement is a very steep area, so certainly logistical concerns there. Hillside Overlay District requires... Says that in no front or rear yard shall retaining walls exceed six feet in the City of San Carlos, and that it should be articulated with features every 30 feet to break it up. These retaining walls create a new hazard in the community. Steep slopes that within it are new cliffs. Children play on these slopes. Many animals use these slopes. So I don't think people appreciate that that's going to be a part of it. It's not illustrated at all in the proposal. And the new walkway, which is considered a benefit, would be, for much as extent, alongside retaining walls above head height. So I don't think that's appreciated in the current project. And then finally, just a quick comment on jurisdictional and scope issues. Again, I live in unincorporated San Mateo County. My property actually fronts both improved Winding Way and unimproved sections of Winding Way that the applicant has proposed approving. He has not had any discussions with me about this. The applicant only owns about, I should say, about half of the proposed improved Winding Way frontage. So that's back to the point of private road. The applicant owns less than half the properties that front that area. And I just want to clarify, I think Jeff said this, that the 2009 annexation agreement, the Environmental Impact Report, the jury reports, all focus on the applicant's properties, the extent of the applicant's properties, which end about 100 yards from the currently proposed road connection to Upper Winding Way. So I just want to say this is a separate issue under county jurisdiction, under city jurisdiction. Staff has made that clear here, but there are places in the applicant's proposal and in the analysis that assume this is connects through when talking about one entire project, so it should be very clear exactly what is being approved here and what is being left to the County of San Mateo to cover under its jurisdiction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next is Elizabeth Olsen.
No, everything has been said.
Next then is Kelly Baumann.
I didn't realize that everyone was kind of giving up on this project of keeping the canyon. It's a little disappointing, very disappointing. And I have to say, all you have to do is go in that canyon, and it's not unsafe. It's beautiful. It's amazing. My daughter and I were just there on Saturday and saw a fox. You see quail, rabbits, deer, all over the place. It's a very special, very unique area. And I've lived there 20 years, and it really was kept up. And all I can think of is that since it changed with this developing plan, that then it gets neglected or something? I don't know. But when we moved in, the first five or 10 years, it was fine. There were emergency vehicles that could go through there, and it was road-wide, you know, to fit a vehicle. So I'd say my tax dollars failed me in that regard. So I've lived on the 100 block of Chesham for 20 years, and I've always opposed building in the canyon. Sorry, I don't like being here. The only benefit to destroying the canyon is to fill the pocketbooks of the developers. Chesham Avenue is 14 feet wide, no sidewalks and no streetlights. We like it that way, and we cannot tolerate more traffic. There's no benefit to building a few homes, but it is devastating to the neighbors and animals. People already drive too fast up and down Chesham, Devonshire, and Windsor, treating it like a one-way street as they use it as a thoroughfare to avoid an overly congested Alameda de los Pogus. The city and developers are just short-sighted and greedy and don't seem to care about the impact this building is doing to the quality of life of residents, animals, and humans. Go fill your pocketbooks somewhere else.
Next is Diane Rule.
My name is Diane Ray, and I am here, Planning Commission staff and members of the community. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Devonshire Canyon Open Space Alliance as Steve Schray was not able to come tonight. And I support a lot of what has been said. I feel like my feelings have been expressed by Sandy and Kelly. One of the... But the Devonshire Canyon Open Space Alliance goal is to create the best outcome we can from where we are. We appreciate the comprehensive staff report that's inclusive of the settlement agreement of 2005 and the resulting final focused DIR. Upon review of the current proposed development, we acknowledge the project remains consistent with that defined in the FFEIR and the LAVCO annexation. Since the initial project proposal, we are here to partner with planning and the city's oversight of the project to get the best outcome that we can and to preserve the canyon as much as we can. We look forward to working together with the staff and the community and the developer to assure that the spirit and letter of the settlement and all subsequent documents, the environmental impact report, and approvals are rigorously adhered to. The DCOSA submitted a letter earlier today detailing two primary concerns with the current proposal. The staff has assured us that all aspects of the FFEIR in regards to the protection of sensitive species would be rigorously adhered to during all phases of the project. Our concern was that it seemed to be listed only for master development, and it's very important to provide that kind of protection before and during any kind of grading. And we were assured that that would be rigorously adhered to, including grading and site preparation. And the motion before you, I believe, has been modified to incorporate that. The other concern that we have raised in a letter is the protection and preservation of the open portion of Upper Pogus Creek at Crossing Number Two, and that is of grave concern. The current proposal is to fill the creek and install a culvert at the crossing that would destroy the creek bed and the riparian corridor. It would fragment it and destroy it. It is in conflict with numerous policies stated in the staff report. We also wish to point out that option one in the report specifies open bridges across the riparian corridor. To be consistent with the plan, Crossing Number Two should also specify an open bridge, not a creek filled with dirt and a tiny culvert. Please refer to the letter for further details. We urge you not to approve the plan at this time, but rather instruct the developer and the staff to revise the plan and adequately address the aforementioned shortcomings. As stated above, the Devonshire Canyon Open Space Alliance and community members are committed to supporting the city in approving a compliant plan every step of the way that's compliant with the five years of work that were done in producing a final focused environmental report that is intended to protect the canyon as far as possible in building. We urge the staff to consult us prior to the approval process to gain our early feedback in the interest of presenting final plans which comply with the requirements set forth in all approved and adopted documents. And I'd also like to say that I live on Chesham Avenue, and I strongly support what Sandy said.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Next, Mr. Nick Calagian?
Good evening. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Nick Calagian. I live at 164 Winding Way, which is one of the properties that spans between the upper paved portion of Winding Way and the lower unpaved portion. For those of you who've walked the area, my property includes the easement that houses the dam and the large culvert that controls runoff and avoids flooding Chesham Avenue when all that water comes down off Hyde Park. Included in Section C3 of the road plan, you can see both the dam and two concrete paved access points, one above the dam, one below. The upper paved access is used at least once a year, sometimes multiple times per year, to bring grading equipment in to activate around the dam to maintain its function as a storm drain. The grading plan, road plan, seems to indicate a several-foot-high retaining wall cutting across that access, preventing the proper maintenance of the dam and risking the downstream properties. The concrete indicated below the dam provides vehicle access for me to my property currently through a double gate. And I want to make sure that the developer is aware of that and that they create a proposal that maintains that access, both, again, for the safe maintenance of the dam and to not lose access to my property. And then I would like to reinforce the previous comments about leaving the road public. There are four additional, I believe, four additional properties between Chesham and the proposed development site that are currently county lots. They should have the same future annexation capabilities that were granted to these lots if, in the future, we decided that it was in our best interest to annex as adjacent properties to a city roadway. We should have that right. If the road is made private, I believe that we are negatively impacted by that in the future. And then lastly, I'd like to say that the Devonshire Canyon Open Space Settlement, I believe, was improperly communicated to all affected properties, including the introduction of those gates at the bottom, which, again, would prevent a gate at the bottom, and the privatization of the road would prevent future annexation of those adjacent lots, negatively impacting us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next and last is James Ong.
Thank you, Commission and staff. My name is Jim Ong. I live at 123 Chesham Avenue. We have many concerns about unresolved issues with putting heavy truck traffic on Chesham Avenue. Chesham is a narrow county road that was not constructed for heavy truck hauling loads. It's highly likely Chesham will be damaged by this traffic and will need repair or repaving as a result. Before approval of grading and hauling or master development, we request commitment from San Carlos and/or the developer that they will pay for any repairs or repaving needed for this street. There is little vehicular traffic and a lot of pedestrian traffic on our section of Chesham. This section of Chesham has beautiful, low-growing live coast oaks that make it a beautiful, shady street where people from all over the canyon love to walk and walk their dogs. It's very unlikely large hauling trucks can come down this section of Chesham without tearing out parts of the trees. A study needs to be done of the potential danger to the trees that define this street before considering routing trucks down this section of Chesham. Chesham is a very narrow road. There's no room for safe parking here and no room for parking that will not obstruct our street. Construction personnel and trucks not parked in the Winding Way Canyon need to be parked on a city street. Devonshire Boulevard and King's Court are candidates. We're also concerned about the effects trucking will have on the commutes of people in Devonshire Canyon and wider areas. The plan specifies that trucks can travel beginning at 7:00 a.m. and travel through commuter rush hour. These trucks will obstruct the narrow canyon roads and cause problems on the wider route they travel, given the existing and growing traffic congestion in the San Carlos area. We request that truck travel be restricted to 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. Thank you for your consideration of these issues. We request that you not approve the plan until these issues are resolved.
Thank you, sir. Would the applicant like to speak, mitigation of any of these comments?
Yeah, my name's Ron Grove, and I've owned the property for 15 years. And I've gone through all... Oh, I mean, I've gone through the lawsuits. I've gone through everything involved in this. I'm happy to answer any questions. I've got consultants here to address any questions. So if they want to personally ask me a question, I'm happy to answer. There was a lot of things that were asked, that were said tonight, that I can't remember them all, but a lot of them were incorrect. But I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has, if they want to specifically ask them.
Why does it need gates?
What gates are you talking... There's only one gate, and it's at the top of the road.
Why do I need gates?
Why do I need gates? There's one gate, and it's at the top of the road. It's been there for the last 15 years I've been there, and it was part of the lawsuit. The lawsuit that I ended up having to pay for, because the people that came to me and did the lawsuit, part of the condition was I had to pay their fees. So we gave them everything they wanted in the lawsuit, and one of the things they wanted was that gate, and they got it. Cost me $60,000 almost in their fees to give them that gate. So that's where we are.
Can you clarify that the settlement does not specify the actual location of where that gate is?
It's going right back in the same spot the gate is now.
Oh, there are two gates.
Well, the primary...
One on either side.
The primary gate.
There's...
The primary...
It says on either end.
Well, there is no gate at the bottom.
There is a gate at the bottom.
Well, that gate's being removed. I'm sorry. That gate's being removed.
So that gate will give access to emergency personnel and fire equipment to go up and get through...
Are you talking about the bottom or the top?
Bottom.
The bottom will not have a gate.
Okay, so there will be access for fire...
That's correct.
...emergency vehicles to proceed all the way to the top gate.
That is correct.
Just excuse me. You know, it's... We're recording this meeting, and when we have a colloquy between the audience and the applicant, we're not getting your question on the record. So, I mean, it's still a public hearing right now, so if people have any other questions, you can come up and ask them, and then we can have the applicant come up and respond, or staff.
I would sit there.
And I think that'd be better, because then everything will be on the record. So I didn't mean to interrupt your... They're very important questions, but I think we just need to have a clear record for this. I think what I heard, just to summarize, is you're willing to answer questions, but I think just the procedure for asking questions should be the member of the public come up, ask the question, or through the chair, the chair can ask the question.
Does the Commission have any question of the applicant?
I'm clear about... I live on Winding Way. Speak in the microphone.
Thank you. My name is Danis Pons, and I live on Winding Way, 135 Winding Way. I had no idea that this was still going on, and I know I don't live within 300 feet of where this is happening on Winding Way, but I was very surprised that I had no idea that this was happening tonight. But my question is, is that the gate... I don't understand the gate and why... I'm sorry that you had to pay that kind of money, but I don't understand why the gate still needs to stay there and why it cannot be a thoroughfare. It sounds to me like this is already happening, like there's no stopping it now, but why does the gate have to be there? I don't understand why that on Winding Way.
Well, I think I can answer the question just because I was aware... I'm aware of the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement that was negotiated between the city and the Open Space Alliance provided that it would not be a thorough street. That was an issue in the litigation. So the upper gate at the Winding Way portion was agreed to remain in place as a fire access-only gate, but with pedestrian access allowed. The lower gate that I think people are talking about is being removed. It's not going to be a gated community. It's going to be an open road from below. And what... I think there's a little confusion because I heard a lot of comments about the road becoming a private road. It's not becoming a private road. The abandonment... It's a 50-foot-wide right-of-way right now. That's what the public street is in this area. So what's happening is little slivers to recognize the geography and to, consistent with the city's policies of having 20,000-square-foot lots and on a steep slope like this, those slivers are being abandoned and become private property, but only the slivers... slivers are being abandoned and become private property, but only the slivers of road, because the settlement agreement provides that we have to have an 18-foot-wide minimum paved road and a pedestrian path. So what you're going to see up there is, when the, assuming it's approved by the planning commission, is an 18-foot-wide paved road, a three-foot-wide gravel road, all designed to accommodate fire vehicles, because that was something that the fire department insisted on, and that's in the conditions of approval. So, has to be able to, all of it has to be able to support the fire trucks and emergency vehicles that would go in. Now, the, because it's a settlement agreement with the Devonshire Canyon group, they're the ones who could agree to have it be a through, along with the city council, and of course have to approve it. But the city council, it's not part of the project. The project right now is to maintain that fire access gate at the upper portion at Winding Way, where Winding Way, the county terminates with the city border. And I know there's other questions staff's probably preparing to answer as well. Just to offer, the nice lady, I'm sorry, I forgot her name, who was representing the Devonshire Canyon Open Space Alliance, was concerned, or at least in her reading, was concerned about our, the ecological impact and are we going to take care of the bushmallow plant and the wood rats? We have hired, retained, a wildlife ecologist. Her name is Kim Breones. She's a senior wildlife ecologist with H.D. Harvey and Associates. She was at the site today and spent quite a bit of time at the site. If it would behoove us all, I'd like her to address the Commission.
Can I respond to that?
Okay.
Please.
My name is Kim Breones. I'm a senior wildlife ecologist with H.D. Harvey and Associates. And we've worked on this project for a long time, actually way back when it first started. And we went out to the site and mapped all of the wood rat nests and did the surveys for the bushmallow plant. Understand that there are concerns about how so much time has gone by since those surveys were done. So we will be going back out there to resurvey the area for wood rats, and also for the bushmallow, and map those, so that they can figure out appropriately, we can figure out, you know, if they can be avoided, and if they cannot be avoided, we would relocate them outside of the impact area. Same bushmallow, we would find out, you know, is it in an impact area? Can it be avoided? And if so, those areas would be mapped, and if not, they would mitigate appropriately. So...
Thank you. Will you come up?
We just have a question for Greg regarding the settlement agreement and the exact description of the access gate to be installed. I think the language that's used in the packet, I think I have it quoted here. Let's see, where is it? Actually, do you have it? I want to quote it correctly, since the language really matters.
And for clarification, is that within the staff report itself, or one of the attachments?
I think it's in both. It is, quote, as part of the settlement agreement...
Do you have the page number?
Page 12 is the first reference. It says, "A new access gate is..." Sorry, page, uh-oh. I don't have the page, but it is "An access gate to prevent through traffic shall be installed at one end of the extension of Winding Way at a location to be approved by San Carlos and the South County Fire District." We just wanted to point out that it did not specify the specific location. It is in the proposal that a new access gate be, proposed to replace an existing gate where the unpaved portion of Winding Way connects to the paved portion of Winding Way. And we want to just point out that this location is actually outside of city jurisdiction and is outside of the applicant's properties or sphere of influence. The other thing we wanted to point out is that the new access gate is said to be manual with a Knox box. That means it's a locked gate, designed to only be used by emergency vehicles. We believe that this is suboptimal for the safety of our community, because the settlement does not imply that the gate should be locked, or that local residents, who are not considered to be through traffic on our public right-of-way, we believe that residents should be able to access the gate, especially in cases of emergency, like an evacuation.
Yes, and if you could give us just a minute, and I think I know where you're reading from, and the numbering can be a little off, so I want to take a minute to explain. For all of those who do have a copy of the staff report, and there are extra copies left over here, they're probably all gone, but at the bottom right-hand corner, we differentiate between the page number of the actual document versus page number of the packet. So I believe you were reading off of packet page nine, and there's three bullet points right at the top of the page, right under settlement gate. And I believe your reference to one end of the extension of Winding Way, that is correct, that's what it states in the staff report, but the actual language of the settlement agreement is actually contained in a couple of attachments, and it's my understanding that it was always to be at the upper portion of Winding Way. Maybe Jeff, if you can point us to where the actual settlement agreement language is?
Yeah, it's also in page 105, exhibit B. It's the language as she stated.
I mean, if this is the actual language from the settlement agreement, you're correct, it doesn't specify the exact location, but there is an existing gate there now and fence that's up in that area, so...
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that on both ends, there is a gate. So there is a gate where Winding Way and Chesham connect today as well. In fact, it's much more substantial, and it's been there since the Hyde Park estate. And then the gate at the top of Winding Way is actually just a chain-link fence.
I've been there.
Not actually a real gate.
I've been there. I know exactly where it is. The, what the settlement agreement provides for is that it's not to be through traffic. So, the existing gate could remain exactly where it is. I'm not sure what you're asking for. What do you want the Commission to do?
I would just, I would propose that the gate not be locked to the community. It says "through traffic," but "through traffic" is defined as vehicle travel that does not end, start or terminate in the local area. Winding Way is part of the local area. We are all one subdivision, and so by nature of the road and the street, we should not be considered through traffic in the case of this language. But even if it is closed, which would limit, restrict through traffic, we believe that the gate shouldn't be locked, especially in the case of an emergency, if residents of Upper Winding Way need to evacuate, if there's a medical emergency. These are all things that, time is of essence and could lead to life and death situations. So we just ask that the gate not be locked, and that residents have access to it in the case of emergency.
I don't have it, I don't have it here. Thank you.
I mean, I'm just going to rely on the language, just for the benefit of the Commission, that it says "to prevent through, to prevent through traffic." So, the solution that the, and what the city's been operating under, is that that would, that means that people can't just open the gate and drive through if they want, because what you're going to have is a situation up there where people will open the gate and leave it open. It will not be, it'll be, then it will be through traffic, and then we could potentially be in violation of the settlement agreement. So, as to where this gate is located, potentially the developer and the fire department could look at the gate and decide that it should be installed further down Winding Way, closer to the project, but that would mean that the existing gate is not going to be replaced, it's going to remain there.
Thank you.
Hi there. So I live at 120 Wing Gate, and was one of the lucky folks that benefited from the tree falling over and being stuck up there for two days. So my suggestion is not actually very complicated. Make it an electric gate with badges and key access for whoever is allowed to be up there. Doesn't have to be a mechanical gate, and I would actually personally be prepared to compensate or participate in spending on doing that, such as the gate is more reasonable for everyone. So if it's, if the only option is it has to be locked, let's make it a smart lock, not a dumb lock.
Are there any more questions from the Commissioners?
There was one other concern from Steve Schray's letter, which was discussed today, which is proposing an open bridge instead of culvert. And I'd like to introduce the civil engineer on the product, Dan McLeod of McLeod and Associates, to discuss that.
Chairman Bradley and fellow Commissioners, my name's Dan McLeod with McLeod and Associates. I'm the civil engineer for the project. Our office is here in San Carlos. To answer the bridge question, I'd like to first just go back a little bit in time when I first started working on this project, and that was 17 years ago. And the project has morphed into what it is today after quite a few delays from neighbors opposing the project, the lawsuit, and some other issues. When I first looked at this road, it was a road, and you, I could drive my pickup truck at that time, I had a large pickup truck. I could drive from Chesham the entire length of the road and get up to the end of Winding Way. There were two crossings underneath the road to handle drainage. Those crossings are illustrated in your packet. Those were pipe crossings. There was never a creek where the gullies are now. Those gullies are there because the storm drain pipes were not maintained, they rotted away, and they failed. So our plan from day one was to replace those culverts with culverts. That design was looked at by Army Corps of Engineers, the State of California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and they've all approved it. If we to go back now, and, you know, those aren't creeks, so we're not putting a bridge over a creek. Those are eroded gullies, and every time we have a rainstorm that's of any significance, those gullies get deeper and wider, and it just sends silt down the creek. So, the design that we have now is to replace what was there for many years, and we don't think a bridge is required to do that.
Thank you.
If you haven't done that, I'd be glad to try to answer.
Did you have a question, comment?
Well, I guess, I'd like to say I'm struggling to understand whether the culvert versus a bridge, whether the bridge would address the maintenance of the current riparian ecosystem there better than the culvert would, and sort of how that judgment is made.
The plans are approved by the various state and federal agencies. Also looked at the biological report and how that fits in with the improvements, and they've approved it. They have accepted it. If we were to put a bridge in and just leave the gully like it is, or the two gullies where the crossings are, every time we have rain, the gully's going to get deeper and wider. It needs to be buttoned up now, or it's just going to get worse as time goes on. It's just going to add, you know, as the gully gets wider and deeper, it just sends more dirt down to where the real portion of the creek is.
So, when the Army Corps of Engineers and the Water Resources Boards looked at your culvert proposal, did they look at it from the point of view of the environmental concern, or just the structural concern?
They looked at both.
Is it integrity?
They looked at both. They had, they also, we had to submit the biological report with the plans to those agencies. In fact, the Regional Water Quality Control Board was very specific about the way they wanted the piping to happen in one of the crossings.
I wonder if it would be possible to have that assessment brought to us, so that we could establish that the environmental concern for the culvert has been appropriately addressed, so that we don't put the city at risk of being in violation of the settlement agreement on that point.
I thought that was already submitted to the...
Maybe. I'm asking a question.
Well, I don't think the settlement agreement was specific about the culvert, it just provided that the roadway would be the specified width and would not be a through roadway. I think it was assumed that it would be culverted at the time, that's my recollection. I don't remember a bridge ever being discussed. That's a new issue that I think is being brought up, arguing that there's been a, because of the washout of the culvert, there's been a change in circumstances from an environmental standpoint. But yet you have before you tonight approvals by the state agencies and federal agencies that have jurisdiction over the creek, so there's plenty of conditions of approval attached to that. And I don't think tonight, I'm equipped to opine on the, you know, the difference between how it affects the creek. I mean, an argument could be made, and this may have been what the Army Corps and the other agencies were considering, is if we leave it, as suggested by the engineer here, that if we leave it the way it is with a bridge, we could have more erosion and other environmental effects, whereas if we culvert it, the erosion in that area would stop, and it would be put back to the state it was in before we had the washout. I don't know, that's probably speculation on my part, but the project is being proposed is culverting the creek. Our environmental consultant is saying that there's no significant impact, there's been no change that requires additional mitigation measures due to the passage of time, because that's why the report was commissioned. So I just think it'd be hard to make the finding that we need to go back and study a bridge when we have an approval by the relevant agencies who have jurisdiction.
Thank you. We have one more question or comment here?
My name is Rose, and I've lived on Chesham Avenue for many years, and I think my comment is directed, my question is directed towards you. I'm not sure. Every year, I'm visited by the fire department to make sure that my property is cleared in case there is a fire. Who is, at this point, responsible for making sure that the canyon is, I mean, it's, the overgrowth is amazingly, it just, it's horrible. If there was ever a fire, it would go up like a tinder block up there.
I agree, and I've been trying to clear it for about 15 years, but due to this litigation and everything, I haven't been able to. I've tried and tried. So my latest proposal was to get up there and get some, get goats up there to clear the whole area, because there's no tractors, it won't be hard on the environment. We had, the biologist was there specifically for that today, to be able to rope off around where the dusty foot of wood rat is, and where the bushmallow plant is, so we can clear that up there, because the concerns we're hearing from the neighbors are that we need to clear that up before it's out of control. It's out of control. So, as you've seen the goats on Edgewood Road, we're proposing to bring those in and get it cleared right now, while we're going through the final plan check on this, so that the liability for all the people up there is gone. But, because of all the red tape, we haven't been able to do that. I mean, I'd set it up in the next week or two. So we're going to submit something from our biologist to the city and say we'd like to protect the endangered species, but we'd like to get the goats in there to clear up all the brush and get rid of that fuel.
Okay. Also, one other quick question, since the gate is going to be removed on Chesham Avenue, is that going to be the thoroughfare then, for everybody coming down?
No, there's a gate on top, and that...
But that's going to be closed, right?
That's correct. The thoroughfare is only for the five houses being proposed on the hill.
Okay, the five houses, but then everybody visiting, the five... Okay, the five houses, but then everybody visiting the five houses and every, you know.
Sure.
The traffic is going to be really impacted on Chesham Avenue once the project is done.
Yes, if there's two houses, if there's two cars per house, there'd be a total of 10 cars passing through maybe twice a day, right?
We need to use the microphones for the Q and A.
Through the chair. I'm sorry, tinder block, but this is just sort of in somewhat of a response to David Roof's question, Commissioner Roof's question regarding the documentation from the Water Quality Control Board and what they reviewed. Your question was, did they look at the engineering in addition to environmental? And the answer to that is yes. And there is some information in the packet. And the reason why I wanted to state this out loud is so the public could hear as well. But in your packet, page 168, includes a letter from the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board, which describes the project details, including both crossings one and two, and outlines each topic area that they reviewed, stormwater, riparian habitat, and so forth, and several mitigation measures that they are requiring of the project. So I just wanted to make note of that, that that was in, it's in the project packet. Thank you.
Thank you for that. One more question. You're next.
I really appreciate your interest in the environment and the riparian corridor. I know that in the staff report, there are numerous mentions of the general plan and the importance of preserving the riparian corridor for the upper creek. And if you look at option one in the staff report, there were two options considered. One of them, option two is the one that is being proposed for implementation. And in option two, the houses are built on the side and do not require, on the west-facing side, and do not require driveways going over the creek. In option one, when driveways, the houses were built on the other side and did require driveways going over the creek. And wherever there was a driveway going over a creek, there was going to be a bridge, and that was considered important for the protection of the creek. Now, I don't know if we can find it, but when the Devonshire Canyon Open Space Alliance first raised issues, we had a video from when water was running down there. And it looked like, I'm trying to think of a river to compare it to, but with a heavy waterfall. If you go up there now, it's just, yeah, I don't even think you'll see it. I mean, like in the summer, it's a very slow, small, slow-moving creek, but a source of water for a lot of the life up there. But when there's a heavy rain, boy, is it a surprise. And I guess the videos may show whether there's water coming down that gully. But if you see how fast that river is running, I just, there is water coming down that gully. It is a source of water. And also in the staff report, there are mentions of the importance of not fragmenting the riparian corridor. And putting a road there, dumping dirt into the creek, basically, to create a, well, 21, 18 feet of road, three feet of pedestrian walkway, is pretty much destroying that part of the creek. Now, I have not seen, we brought this issue up today, and members of the Devonshire Canyon Open Space Alliance have not seen the reports on, you know, putting, filling that in and putting in a culvert. I'm curious whether alternatives have been considered and found that they can't be, they can't be done. I mean, if it is possible to put in a bridge and preserve the riparian corridor, that matters. I mean, it matters to Devonshire Canyon. It matters to the Winding Way Canyon. And I feel that it's important that that possibility be examined. Clearly, it's possible to dump dirt there and put asphalt over the top and put in a corridor, put in a little culvert, and you can have a road that way. The question in my mind is, is it possible to build a bridge and solve the problem that way? And maybe there are, you know, if that's pursued, maybe there are issues that have to be resolved there. But if the city of San Carlos, you know, in the staff report, it cites, I think there's maybe 10 different citations of the general plan and documents that do value the preservation of the riparian corridor. And I hope we respectfully request that before going forward, that that possibility be examined. And especially, you know, the fact that option one is when the driveways are going across the creek, it's not by dumping water in it. It was going to be by bridges. And, you know, you could assume from that that any crossing of the creek, that option will be considered important and be examined. Thank you.
Thank you. One more comment or question?
As was stated, that road was there since 1926. Somebody came up with that. But that road was 18 feet wide forever until the drainage ditch, which it is a drainage ditch, because there's no water running through it at this time unless it does rain, eroded that whole hill. So prior to that, it was a road and never, never needed a bridge access.
Thank you.
So I tend to agree. If you look at that road, I think it's important to remember that Chesham exists because of a buried creek. That creek that runs down through our canyon goes under Chesham. So understanding the size and scale of pipe that's required to carry that water should be quite straightforward. The same is true at the dam location, where all of that water runs into a 48-inch, I believe it's a 48-inch diameter, pipe down into the ground and comes out on the other side of the dam. So it seems entirely consistent with the other construction that was completed to create the neighborhood, that you solved the road problem in that way. Second, I'd like to state that the Devonshire Canyon Open Space Alliance is a group of people, largely, I believe, residents of Chesham, who sued the city as part of this project to protect traffic flow on Chesham. And I believe that the counterpoint of that, which is the safety of residents on Winding Way, Winding Way is at least as narrow as Chesham. It carries many of the same risks. The original community plan included that road as a loop. And somewhere along the line, it was decided that it was not important, that it was okay to create a very long and precarious dead-end road. And it's, there is an opportunity here to correct that mistake and create a much safer environment that in light of recent wildfires in California would suggest that we should address that. So I would welcome anybody else who's interested in that, that we figure out a way to not end this with a different lawsuit, but with some sort of agreement with the neighbors so that we can create a safer neighborhood for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move to close the public hearing. I second.
I will take the roll call. Commissioner Roof? This is to close the public hearing, so all you're voting on is approving, agreeing to close the public hearing, or otherwise known as the public comment period. Although through the chair, I wasn't quite sure if you've gone through all the comments, and so it sounds like you have. Okay. So I have a motion by the chair and a second by Commissioner Dugan. And so now I will take the roll call. Commissioner Roof to close the public hearing?
Actually, I did have some more questions before I would be willing to address.
You'll be able to ask questions after we close the public hearing? That's, this is just closing the public comment period, and then there's another opportunity for the commissioners to ask questions of staff.
Okay, wonderful. That works for me, so yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Commission questions of staff?
Yeah, I heard a number of concerns about the, you know, I'm familiar with what these roads are like in these canyons, how narrow they can be, and how people have to use them, not just cars. There are, people walk their pets, children live in these canyons. So I do think it's a valid concern how exactly these trucks are going to come and go on this project, where the workers are going to park on a daily basis, and how all of that will be handled reasonably so that the community is kept safe. And I'd just be interested in how the staff thought about that problem and how that's being addressed.
Lisa, can you field any backup on this? But in the grading and dirt haul certificate, one of the conditions is that the applicant, or is it that, submit a traffic control plan prior to the issuance of a grading permit and obtain the approval of Public Works Department. So those issues and concerns could be addressed, at least at that point.
And one thing I did want to mention regarding specifically the dirt haul route, and we heard quite a few comments on that this evening, is that the way that this typically works is when we get an application that requires grading and dirt haul, the applicant basically takes the first attempt to come up with a proposal for a dirt haul route. That is something that staff receives, and then we pass on to our public works peers in engineering, and they review it. And if they have any concerns about that, they let us know. I believe when we first received the grading and dirt haul route, and I think most of the people in the audience know that a lot of the staff that are here today isn't the same staff that was here when all of this was first occurring with the whole annexation process. But fast forward, when we started to hear concerns from the neighbors, and a couple of neighbors actually came up with some ideas for what would be a better route, those were forwarded to our engineering division, and they didn't have any objection for changing the dirt haul route. There are two proposals, I believe, and according to engineering, either one of them could work. And so maybe if the commission is interested, we could sort of bring up a map and show the two different options. I think, Jeff, do you have a good sense of what those are? We could show what those options are. But I will say that if the commission decides that it's a good idea, and I'm sure we're going to do this, that if we present a different dirt haul route, that particular action needs to be re-noticed and brought back to the commission. And that's because we have regulations in our ordinance that specify whenever the commission approves a dirt haul route, it needs to be noticed. So if the route gets changed, we then need to notify all of those individuals on that route. So that would be one aspect that could come back. But I don't believe that would hold up anything in this application. That's something we can certainly do. So if the commission is interested in kind of delving into those details on the two different options, we're happy to do that. But otherwise, we are prepared to, and support, an alternative route.
My concern wasn't on the dirt haul route, and I appreciate that the Torino route was decided against. My, but if I heard you right, the, we will have another opportunity to review how the site, parking, the flow of workers in and out of the building site will be something we review in the future as they submit further applications.
Well, there would be, there's two different phases. The first phase that would occur is construction of the road. So what the commission is being asked, what action the staff is recommending you take regarding this phase of the project only concerns the road. So any type of conditions would be attached to the grading plan to construct the road. And there are some conditions in there, and I think maybe, Jeff, if you can come up and point those out. And then once, say the city council approves the master development plan, and any actions that you may take tonight or at a future meeting would then become effective. After that, the applicant can then come forward and submit formal applications to construct the house, of which they would have their own conditions attached to, you know, the traffic control, or how to address the parking of the, you know, construction workers and so forth during that particular phase of development. So what you're seeing in your packet tonight are all of the conditions tied to what would be asked of during construction of the road. And Jeff, if you could point out the correct page number, that'd be great. Thanks.
Page 119, condition eight. Again, that's applicant must submit a traffic control plan prior to the issuance of a grading permit and obtain the approval of the Public Works Department. And Grace Lay, if she's here, she can elaborate if she likes. But my understanding of that is it would ultimately be up to Public Works to approve that for their review in terms of what conditions and how that takes place for that traffic control plan. And that's not just for the dirt haul, but for the entire road construction.
And I might just add that conditions four on the draft code compliance certificate requires that trucks used for dirt hauling line up on the site and not on Chesham Avenue. So the preparation for the, and the loading and unloading is all going to happen on the site as opposed to on the portion of Chesham that's already developed right now.
Jeff, could I just, if you don't mind, clarifying? I think it was referenced that there were 25 truckloads, 25 truck round trips are anticipated off-site during the road construction period? Is that correct? And is there an estimate by the applicant, over what period of time those 25 truckloads off the site with trucks coming back on will take? Is this like over 90 days, or 180 days, or in a week, or what? Just to try to give an estimate of the intensity.
Most of the off-haul is, for the trucks at this point in time are going to be for all the debris, which is the retaining walls that are painted, all the garbage and any clearing we need to do, and the top soil that comes off the top of that road that's not compactable. So that would be the, that happened in the first four to six weeks.
Okay. So let's say it, over a four to six-week period, it might be on the order of one or several trucks a day. You're not, you're not anticipating five or 10 trucks a day in any, that's not where you're thinking.
You might, you might do four trucks round trip, five trucks maybe a day. And it won't be every day. It'll be through that, through that period of time.
And the rest of the activity is on-site, contained within the site?
The grading and stuff is on-site, correct?
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
I have a question. There was a suggestion that we consider whether the trucks, and the construction in general should be allowed on Saturdays and Sundays. And is it, how would it impact the project? Would it be acceptable to restrict the work to Monday through Friday or Monday through Saturday?
I've been doing this a long time, Saturday and Sundays are kind of my day off, too. So we kind of stay away from Saturdays and Sundays.
So would you agree to a condition of approval that would require that if the commission wanted to impose that on the grading and dirt haul?
The only days we really work on a Saturday is if it's a big pour day, when you need to pour concrete, because, which is rare. There'd be one or two of those during the whole, the whole job, but very rare. And, I mean, we're working on San Carlos, and I think I had a call up and tell them I was doing that on a Saturday as well. So I gave notice and, but generally, we do not work on Saturdays and Sunday for sure.
Would you be willing also to limit your Monday through Friday to nine o'clock in the morning to four instead of seven o'clock when people? in the morning to four instead of seven o'clock when people are going to work?
We generally do eight o'clock. I, I think eight o'clock's the, eight o'clock to four is, is the standard time in the, on the whole San Carlos. I mean...
Yeah, but most people have a wider road to pass cars.
I mean, the garbage trucks come by at 5:00 a.m., and they're, they're not, they're not changing their times, are they? I mean, I don't think we could get, I think it'd be a, a big task to start at nine o'clock. I think it'd be hard.
We don't have control over the garbage trucks, but we do have control over building.
I do, I do agree. But the trucks won't be running up, starting at eight o'clock would be no different than the workforce. What time does the general workforce start in, in, in the Bay Area, or in San Carlos? I mean, what time does school start? Asking nine o'clock for a start time and ending at four is kind of, I mean...
That's why I'm asking you, if you will do it, so it won't conflict with people getting their kids to school or themselves going to work.
Yeah. Generally, the people going into the site at eight in the morning are the people that are gonna be working there. And we will be parking on-site, so nobody will have to worry about us parking down on Chesum and, and everywhere else.
So maybe you're thinking, then, that the big vehicles, which will be hauling...
We could push the big vehicles off, sure.
So maybe that would be something that you would agree to for anything other than, let's say, passenger vehicles that are gonna park on-site? Larger construction hauling vehicles do not start before nine?
Uh, we, we can, we could probably work a way where the 10-wheelers and anything that size wouldn't make it up there before nine o'clock. I mean, it'll be tough, but I'm sure we could try to, try to work that out.
Thank you. Any other questions of the staff or the applicants from the commission?
I, I do have some more questions. There's, there's a lot of pieces to this, so I think it's important to try to address everything that has been brought forward. And it was mentioned that there is a, potentially a 10 or 12-foot retaining wall that's not consistent with the normal height of retaining walls in San Carlos. Is that something that can be or has been fixed in the, in the plan?
So yeah, this was one of staff's concerns as well, early on in the process. And, you know, we talked thoroughly internally with our Public Works Department, as well as with the applicant, to determine if there was feasibility to do terracing. So maybe it's, you know, two, five-foot walls. But our, our response internally from Public Works, as well as from the applicant, is due to the, the right-of-way width, you only have so much width to work with, and due to the, the high slopes of the surrounding site, that the feasibility of doing that just makes it quite burdensome, quite hard. I'm not an engineer, so I, I can't quite speak to that, but in our discussions, that was, what was discussed.
So if, so if we were to approve this, this road request, we'd be also approving a, the variance on the retaining wall height?
So...
Well, it's not a variance, that, it, it's just you're approving a plan that would allow for a wall of that height.
And we could pull up the zoning ordinance, but I believe it states in the front yard of, of houses, which technically is not the, the front yard, this is the actual roadway.
And I believe, I don't know if it's in the packet, but there, and maybe it's in the street improvement plans, but this is a concern that we, the aesthetics of this wall is a concern that we have relayed to the applicant. And I know they looked at various options, but there were, like you said, Jeff, limited by the right-of-way width. But we are still very interested in, and maybe there's a condition of approval about getting more information about the design of that retaining wall. Could you speak to that, Jeff?
Yeah, and working with the applicant, they were originally proposing just a, you know, a blank concrete wall. And so we were able to work with them to, instead of, you know, one vertical concrete wall, to have it slanted inwards and have it be split-faced concrete block. And I believe they provide details of that in their street improvement plans to, to soften it at least and improve it a little bit.
In addition to the aesthetics, it's a 12-foot, looks like a sheer wall. There's certainly a safety concern there for both children, hikers, wildlife. Is there, I don't see it here on the plan. Is there any kind of fencing that'll be proposed on top of that wall?
Could the applicant speak to that?
The, the sloped retaining walls are 10 to 12 feet in, in small sections. And it kind of matches the contour of the dirt that's already there. It's on the high side of the, of the road. So there's no walking up there, there's, there's nothing else up there. It's just trees and vegetation. So the, the high side of that and the sloping side is no different than, than if you walked that road now. There's, there's not a, visibly, it's gonna be a concrete split-face wall retaining the dirt from coming down onto the road. But otherwise, it's gonna be kind of what it looks like now.
But it's gonna be a sheer wall, right?
It's gonna be, it's, we're having to put that at an angle, that split-face stone at an angle. And that, that property up there that we're going up against isn't our property. We're going up against an open space, and there's no, there's no, there's no paths, there's no hiking, it's just pure vegetation. So you'd be putting a fence up to keep from falling down.
Well, I mean, you're building five homes that'll presumably be occupied by families.
On the downhill, on the downhill side of that property, we've proposed guardrails all the way around it.
Okay.
And they're on, they're on the plan.
Can, can we pull that up? I don't have an understanding of where the guardrails would be and where they wouldn't be.
The safety rails?
Yeah, on the, on the hillsides, we have rails.
Okay.
On the high sides, it's, it's just vegetation and, and open space.
Okay.
So we'll circle back with an, with that information I've, I've written in down, so we'll make sure that the, we can show that to the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarification, so the retaining wall is gonna be on my property, yeah? Or it's the edge of it? And so my kids that are eight years old would be the ones that might fall off the edge?
Commissioner, to the chair, the, the public hearing is closed. I think I'm hearing a factual question about where the, where the wall is gonna be located. And, and my understanding of the plans is the walls are in the right-of-way. They're not on other people's property.
Sorry, let me rephrase. My property goes all the way up to said retaining wall, and therefore, my kids would be the kids that fall off the edge, if there wasn't a fence or some sort of guardrail at the top of it. Does that sort of address your...
That's the, that's the question you're asking, so...
Yes, that's the question I'm asking.
So we, but remember, the public hearing's closed, so if the, if the commission, procedurally, if the commission wants to take more testimony, we reopen the public hearing and get more testimony. Since it's closed, it's not customary to take more public testimony, because that, that line is supposed to be a line where the record of the proceedings is, shifts from public comment to deliberation.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Greg. And your concerns noted, and I share it.
Thank you.
I would suggest that you talk with the applicants later, too.
I have another question regarding the, the dam access issue that was raised. It wasn't clear to me whether, whether the dam was on city property or county property. Whose, whose dam is that? And is there a way to provide for the access to the dam and to the, and to the private property owners?
I believe this was one of the public comments that we received. Is the applicant prepared to answer that question? Thank you.
I'd answer that question and also the one regarding the retaining walls. Getting back to the retaining walls, we were, during the plan check process through the engineering department, they asked that we look at the roadway itself and the issue of cars driving off the roadway. I mean, the roadway now, and a lot of the roadways in the Devonshire area have, there's no protection from driving off the road. So what we did was, in the areas where it was fairly steep coming off of the roadway, we proposed to put guardrails. And there's a detail on the upper-left corner of sheet C6, which is in the back of the packet in the improvement plans. And we show a detail in the areas where it's required due to the, due to the slope, that we do have a guardrail on the downhill side of the roadway. On the uphill side of the roadway, as Mr. Grove mentioned, it's very steep right now. There's nothing, I mean, if you were to walk on the slopes, you're gonna, you can't walk on the slopes. There, a lot of them are near verticals. So we, on the top of those walls on the uphill side, we do not show any protection right now. As far as the issue of the driveways that are serving, I think, I, I forgot the gentleman's name, I have it written in my packet here somewhere, but the two driveways serving the dam, we, we are aware of that situation, and there's actually an emergency vehicle access easement that runs adjacent to those two driveways. That is where the existing road is now, and it allows space for further widening of the roadway. So we can easily revise the road in that location so that we do not disturb those two driveways that he speaks of.
Is that something that can be included if we were to address this resolution tonight?
You know, my, my...
Is that something that could be included as part of what we address?
It has to be tied to the, to what you're approving tonight, and if that, that's part of the road that's being approved. So I would think you could put a general condition subject to approval by the city engineer that access to, to the extension of widening way will be provided to these parcels. They have a legal right to access the road, so I, I think it's by operation of law, they have to have access, the access can't be cut off. So I don't know the elevations and all the, the details that would be required for that, but I think it's something that...
It's similar to the rest of the roadway?
If I could, a follow-up question to the, the retaining walls. Are, will, will the process of widening the road create more lineal feet of, let's say, 10 or 12-foot cut than exists today naturally by the slope that goes along the edge of, of the road?
Yes, it would.
And is, do you have, could you estimate, are we talking 10 feet, tens of feet, or hundreds of feet? How, how might you scale what we're creating as a new big wall versus what might exist today?
I believe we, we had an exhibit that was part of the, part of one of the applications that gave a general description and length of various heights of retaining walls. I believe it was part of the master development... I guess that plan is...
So just give us a minute. That's a detail we had asked for, but it's not included in the packet, so we're gonna take a minute to get that. But we can continue to have conversation about any other questions you have. And I know that the planning commission has full-size sets of plans as we talk about these details, but what I just went and did is I uploaded copies of the entire plan set of the master development plan, as well as the street improvement plan. So as we discuss these particular pages, I can bring them up. So just let me know what sheet you're on, and I'll bring that up, so that everyone can see. For any, for, for any time you're looking through the plans and discussing something, I can bring that up on the screen so the public can see as well. Okay. But that particular item, I think Commissioner Yakapony asked for the, the linear segments of retaining wall heights, an exhibit that, that Jeff Valentine will return with.
Right, that's not, I guess that's not part of the packet.
Correct, that's not part of the packet.
I have another question regarding the lighting, the street lighting plan. So that was a concern, and I can imagine that in a canyon like that, having bright streetlights along there would be, would be detrimental. So I wondered what the, what the plan for this road is compared to the similar developments in the area.
There is no lighting up there, it's just, it matches everything else up there. So I don't know where the issue of lighting came from. That was discussed prior, and there is no lighting up there.
Okay, good. That, that should, that addresses that, I guess that addresses that concern, then?
I'm just circling back to the retaining wall and the 12-foot of exposure. Did staff look at that from a life safety standpoint? And can anyone think of other examples in the city where we have a 12-foot-high retaining wall on a steep hill? I can't think of one.
I don't know if this is a question for the city engineer, but I recall Jeff Valentine stating that this is something that was reviewed as part of engineering's review of the retaining wall. So maybe we can have our, have Grace Lee answer that question. Thanks, Grace.
Grace Lee, City Engineer. We did review it with the applicant, and we suggested terracing the walls to reduce the height. There are a number of challenges, and the applicant can elaborate on that, but it turned out that we, that wasn't, it was not as feasible to reduce, to terrace and reduce to wall height. It would mean that we'd take up more width, cutting into the hillside more, if we want to terrace it back. So it's the height, or it's more width cutting into the hillside, that's the balance. And in terms of, if there's anywhere else in the city, I, I, off the top of my head, I can't, I don't know.
If you drive up Club Drive about halfway up, there's something I would describe very similar.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of places. Lupin Way and on Alameda de Las Polgus, there's some retaining walls. I don't know if they're quite 12 feet, but they're, you know, probably 10 feet in, in a couple of places. It's just people, you know, you drive by them, you don't notice them, but they're, they're there whenever there was a larger project. So Club is that type of a project. Alameda, when it was widened many years ago, had, has retaining walls. And Lupin, as part of the development, it, it has a rather large retaining wall that goes along the whole way.
Yes, as I see retaining walls like that, I've typically have seen a chain-link fence at the top of them.
And, and I, I think that, you know, it's, I'm not, it's a legitimate issue that whether or not there should be a chain-link fence for public safety there. I think what, what I heard from the applicant was, well, it's not, it's not an area that's traveled by the public. But if there is a safety concern, it's something that you could direct the, I usually say, have the city engineer look at it, because we're not professionals. I'm not a professional, and, and sometimes we have to, I would want to look at it from a liability standpoint for the city, because the wall will be in the right-of-way. But I think we would want to have the, the city engineers' approval on something like that. Because we don't want to make something more dangerous than it otherwise is.
And just to check, I think that the, it was a homeowner thinking about maybe the side or back of their property, and children or people unsuspecting who might be on the property encountering the top of that wall. So an individual homeowner in the, in the absence of this development might have chosen to put in a fence. And maybe there's an opportunity for the applicant to work with individual homeowners who are interested in such protection in high areas on their property to install mutually agreeable fencing?
And my, my concern was more general, not having reviewed the specific, you know, where is it high, how does it relate to the slope? So I, I believe our, our engineer did look at it specifically in that way. And did you consider life safety in your review? Did you, you know, is it a true statement that the whole hillside is so incredibly steep, no one could ever be walking up there? I mean, is that actually true?
I, I don't think that's a statement I can make, that no one can walk up there. But chain-link fence is something we can revisit with the applicant. I know that's been looked at at one point and considered not really likely that it'd be needed. But if we need to revisit, we can do so.
Yeah, I, I don't have the detail to ask for a condition on this. I just hope it's been considered adequately.
I just, I just think your condition of approval on something like this would be to have the city engineer review... to have the city engineer review the safety at the top of the wall and consider fencing if appropriate.
Okay, I would like to add that condition.
Me also. Thank you, agreed. Some more questions on the privatization of the road, which I think you clarified is not being privatized, the road itself would, would still be city property and city responsibility for upkeep. Is there, is the upkeep an issue for the city, I mean, is that a potential cost that the city should be worried about?
The engineer will respond to that.
I do want to clarify that it's, it's true. The, currently before you, it's not an action to abandon the entire right-of-way, it's just portions of the right-of-way to make the lot-line adjustment, but there is a condition for the applicant to maintain the roadway and all the utilities, so that would be upheld. So the maintenance of the roadway, the storm sewer along the roadway, that would be all maintained by the developer, property owner.
By the property owners, going forward?
Yeah, the eventual property owner.
But just to be clear, that doesn't make it, it's still a public road, it's just we have a maintenance requirement and condition of approval for the project, that the developer maintain it.
Thank you.
Can the applicant please speak to, how is that actually done? I mean, you, is it become a separate entity you have to form, or is there already going to be a homeowners' association, or how does that get affected?
It's not an association, it would be a maintenance agreement that's on the deed when you purchase the house or you live there. I'm going to move into one of them, so I'll be on there as well. So basically, the five homes that are on that street will be responsible for all the upkeep of it.
So what, what does that means, like, the city does the work and you get the bill, or you can choose to do it yourself?
We do it all ourselves, pretty much. It's, it's in a maintenance agreement, I think it's kind of pretty common, isn't it, Greg?
And how does the, how do the five homeowners, I'll say, guarantee that the funds are there to do the repairs when required? Is there a bond put up, or how, I'm not sure how that works?
I'm not real positive on the verbiage, but liens can be put on the homes and, and I mean, it's a deed, it's, it's recorded against your property, period. So it'd be like, I guess...
And as typically, I review those types of agreements to make sure that they're enforceable and meet the purposes of the commission. I think it needs to require permanent maintenance of the roadway to a reasonable standard that, you know, that maintains the weight for the fire trucks and, and all the, all the, those types of characteristics. It may not be, remain a pristine road, but it'll, it'll be a serviceable road.
Greg, as, just as a policy, why does the city require that? I mean, these homes will be paying property tax, like other homes in the city, I'm just, you know, it almost introduces a difficulty of administering to try to get the individual owners to, to, to pay when they need to.
I think the, the way I can best answer that question is that as we get further and further into the more, more and more difficult properties to develop, the cost to maintain the improvements increases exponentially. So a street in the White Oaks neighborhood that's on a nice level, flat spot with standard sidewalks, probably doesn't have to be, the sidewalks probably last 75 years unless, you know, trees cause some damage, but up in this area, there's a lot of forces acting on the, the improvements, and the improvements are more substantial. So from a policy standpoint, our city is trying to allocate the cost of maintaining these types of improvements to the homeowners, rather than have the city general taxpayers pay for, for these types of improvements. And one, one way of looking at it is, from an equity standpoint, a neighborhood that has a sidewalk that is going to last for 75 years, their improvements are very stable, and it's probably not fair to the entire city to allocate a very expensive cost repair to, that's benefiting just a small segment of the population.
I have another question regarding, there's, there will be four parking spots per house, and no parking along the road. So I'm wondering, is there a precedent for such a long road and no place for public parking?
Well, we do have, some, a lot of the county roads have no parking unless somebody carves out their own, you know, parking space, and I, on Chesum, actually, I have some, I know someone who lives on that part of Chesum, and they have little carve-outs where people have made a space to park in front of their house, so that won't be allowed on this space. You know, Club Drive has no parking along the whole street, it's, except until you get near the top, because it's relatively narrow. On the lower part, Beverly Drive does not have parking on it, it's too narrow. I can think, you know, on Coronado, that's a street that's near Highland Park, there's several segments of those streets that don't allow parking on the street, and they're actually posted that way. So I, we do have those when we have narrow streets, and, you know, because of the, again, because of the settlement agreement and the limitation on the width of the road, I mean, the intention at the time was to not create this as a through road, so it's 18, it's going to be 18 feet wide. I mean, that's enough for two cars to pass.
Yeah. There's a, a trail access provision made, which sounds good to me, but then I'm wondering if, how people would actually, I mean, I guess you would just walk down the road to get there, there wouldn't be a pressure for people to be parking along the road, creating a safety hazard, or?
Yeah, I think the, this, the pedestrian access is basically maintaining what's there now, you know, albeit there's a chasm where you can't really cross that easily now, but originally, this was a walking path for the neighborhood, so the intention was to, the three-foot-wide pedestrian trail is just to maintain the through for pedestrians and, you know, people walking their dogs and things like that. I thought you were, for a minute, you were talking about the trail easement that...
I was thinking of the trail easement, as well.
The trail easement is, came out of the city's conceptual plan for trails for Devonshire Canyon. It was just designed to maintain an access point should, at some point, the property owners in the, in Devonshire Canyon support the idea of having a larger trail network, because there's room for that there, but it's, right now, it's all private property.
Thank you. One more question, back to this idea of the gate. If the residents of the area wanted to come back to the city and reopen the question of whether there was a locked or closed gate or not, they could do that? There's nothing that says that settlement is forever, is that, I'm presuming, right?
It would require, and it becomes difficult in these circumstances, because the Devonshire Open Space Alliance is a group of residents, and the group of residents can change over time, they could still be the same organization, but it's an unincorporated association, doesn't have any, as far as I know, anyway, any standard officers. It has leaders and people who can sign an agreement to amend the settlement agreement, but we would, I would just want to make sure that it's enforceable and it could be done. So I would say, yes, it could be done in the abstract, but it might take a lot of effort and getting a pretty strong support for that. The city couldn't unilaterally do it.
Yeah, thank you. What about making emergency access a little bit more straightforward, not having the fire department come out with the keys, but to have, I see it's a slippery slope to try to allow local residents access, because just how local do you have to be to have that privilege? And you'd have to draw a line somewhere, that would be difficult. But, but it seems like a valid concern that, to expect somebody to come from downtown to unlock the gate in the case of an emergency, there could be an easier solution.
I don't know if the fire department has, it's a good question. I don't know if the fire department has a policy, if, if it's the kind of lockbox that a combination is available to, you know, to certain people in the area that could open it. I don't know, that, it's a good question, but, I understand the fire marshal's here, so there might be a policy that the fire department has, but it would be up, it's, it's their policy, it's, it's the gate they, they need to have secured.
Hi, good evening, Gareth Harris, I'm your fire marshal. So for fire department access, what we use is a padlock that has our Master Knox Key tumbler in it. So I'm sure you've seen on many buildings Knox Key safes, and those are safes that you, we have a master key, we open it up, open it up, and then there's keys to the building inside. Well, what Knox makes is a padlock that's weatherproof, is designed for exterior use, that has that same tumbler in there that we have a master key for. So that's what we would have on a manual gate. I know there was discussion about an electric gate. Knox also makes Knox Key switches, to where if it was an electric gate, then our same master key could turn a switch, which would open the gate. But as a matter of routine, we don't come out and open the gate unless it is truly an emergency. And really, for us, the idea of getting a fire truck through there, it's such a narrow roadway without a provision for turning around a fire apparatus, that the reason that we have access to that gate is so that we could drive through with the engine, instead of trying to turn it around or back it up the length of the whole roadway, which...
Would be tricky on winding way.
Slightly, yeah, considering our large apparatus is, you know, 60 feet long, so...
So if a tree fell and blocked acc, a big tree fell and blocked access, scenario that was raised by, I think, more than one person, would opening the gate be possible?
Sure. Now, in an area-wide disaster, if we have an earthquake or something, I wouldn't count on us having anyone available to be able to do that, so that could certainly pose a challenge. But really, from our aspect, we just need to be able to get through it. And so, you know, having roadway improvements, having vegetation cleared, we're supportive of being able to have a more fire-resistant community that's going to be able to withstand a wildland fire. The conditions now are, frankly, from our point of view, pretty scary, and I'm supportive of the idea of bringing goats in, but as part of a vegetation management plan, which we should talk about, but the idea of just thinning that out, the idea of anything that's going to be built in there because of the fire hazard severity zones, is going to have to meet fire-resistant construction requirements in the code. So any homes that are built, once the, if the project is approved, any homes that are built in there are going to be significantly more fire-resistant than most of the homes in the surrounding area, which, it protects the home from a wildland fire, but it also protects the wildland from a structure fire, so just keep that in mind. And that's not a special condition, that's already law, based on the fact that it's in a fire hazard severity zone that's been adopted by city council.
So if there was a fire of some sort at the low end of winding way, people can't get out that way, they need to get out of the fire, so, you know, would, are you comfortable that the egress would be, they have to walk now out the top of winding way past this gate?
Comfortable with that? No. You know, our, our priorities are people first, life safety, property preservation, the environment, so our number one goal is for people to be safe, and then to be able to protect your properties, and then protect the environment. So, you know, the what-if scenario that you've just described is a challenge, because our resources are going to be devoted to fighting that fire, to stopping the danger, and so we, we're not going to have resources available to be able to go up to the top and unlock the gate. So to count on us to be able to do that in the event of a big fire is, that's not real.
Yeah, I don't know how it could be incorporated, but I would feel more comfortable if there was a easier way to have emergency access, in addition to the regular fire department access, that would, that would be a given, but to have an additional way, additional options to have that gate be opened, that may not be allowing general public driving through, but would allow, under a wider variety of circumstances.
Well, I've certainly seen...
Not so much a question for you, maybe, as, as, as part of the, how the city controls the locking mechanism, and who has access...
I have seen circumstances of gates like this, where you can daisy-chain padlocks, so you have our lock, daisy-chain, would say, a combination lock that only certain homeowners could have the combination, those that live right there. There's, there's solutions, engineering solutions that can achieve your goals.
It just has to meet the provisions of that settlement agreement, as far as I am concerned, as far as access. So if there's some flexibility, and it, and we would not be accused of opening this gate up to public traffic, then, but I think that's pretty strict. I think it includes the residents up there, public through traffic includes the residents, but for emergency access, I think we're talking about something different.
Greg, I don't want to bog down on this, but I'm not familiar with this settlement. Is there a couple-minute summary you could provide of exactly how it is we're bound to have a gate on a road that, you know, I don't think a lot of people will be driving on regardless?
Well, this is, you know, the five-minute short primer on what happened. Back in 2004, I think it was, if I'm getting the timing, and I think it's generally summarized in the staff report, the project was coming through for lot-line adjustments and annexation, and the city was sued by the Devonshire Open Space Alliance, because they alleged that we hadn't studied the bushmallow plant and the tusky-footed woodrat that were species that have some level of protection in, in, at the state of California. So those, in the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared, those were not addressed, and there were no mitigations for that at the time. So the city was sued, and then as part of the settlement agreement, the issues that the neighbors were also concerned about that weren't necessarily environmental issues became issues of concern that, that became part of the settlement agreement. And there were, there were other issues they brought up, like traffic and, and things of that nature, that led to the, the provision for the gate being installed, so that there wouldn't be through traffic. And that was a settlement agreement that was approved by the city council with this group, it resulted in this, in the settlement of the case, and required the city to do a follow-up environmental review to review the bushmallow and the tusky-footed woodrat, which led to all the mitigations that you're seeing in, in this project, that include, you know, the identifying the plants, relocating them if feasible, removing, relocation of the nests of the tusky-footed woodrat. There's a lot of detail in what has to happen to meet the mitigations that were identified in the, in the supplemental EIR.
And that lawsuit was bought, brought in the earliest days of this, of this project, right? I mean, that, it was brought in the context of, hey, we want to put houses up here, correct?
Yes, oh, yeah. It was part of the annexation and the lot-line, a new, I think it was a new subdivision map, actually, because there were many more small, little, narrow lots here before the, that, each one was a legal lot before and could have been developed, now whether it was feasible or not, it's another question, but that, those were reduced to five lots.
It was a merger.
Lot merger, okay. It wasn't a map? Okay, I thought because it was five, it might have had to be a map, but, okay. Okay. So just for the record, it was a merger of the lots.
Thank you, you didn't even take five minutes, Greg.
Thank you.
We've looked at the sites, we've heard staff reports, professional and technical opinions, emotional comments here. I want you to know that we take our job seriously. Planning and especially subdivision, especially in steep hillside properties, is always complicated, complex, and requires compromise to work out as neighbors in the city of good living in the public interest. So if we could bring the motion up, we'll consider it.
There are several motions, right? Lisa?
Yeah.
So a procedural question. Have these motions incorporated the changes that we've been discussing?
No, you will, you will want to specify the changes or the additional-
As we go through, as we go through the resolutions, now's our chance to make sure the words get in there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And so this is a summary of the five motions that are before the planning commission this evening, if you're ready to make those. And just to sort of recap, because I know this is a lot, the first resolution that you would be considering is whether to recommend that the city council adopt the addendum to the FFEIR, that Final Focused Environmental Impact Report. The second resolution is making a recommendation to the council that they consider and approve the master development plan, the lot-line adjustment, and the protected tree removal permit. The third resolution would be making, and this is a requirement, this is a general requirement, anytime you're disposing of property, is that you'd make a general plan conformity finding that portions of the right-of-way are consistent with the general plan. The fourth resolution would be approving of a master grading plan, and that, again, would be approval contingent upon the council approving the master development plan. And then the same with the fifth resolution, a resolution approving the grading and dirt haul certificate. However, given the comments that we received tonight, public testimony and public written comment, it appears to me that the commission may want, not want to take action on the fifth resolution, because if you were to recommend an alternative dirt haul route, we'd, we would need to bring that back before the commission, so that's not something that we could do this evening. And then for each of those motions, this is what staff typically presents. Sorry about that, this is kind of touchy. We-
I'm sorry, was there a proposal to change the, the dirt haul route?
That's what I'm hearing, but it's up to the commission to decide, and I think that that would probably even be our recommendation, now that we have that new information. So the motions are, are provided on a separate slide, and this is the language for each one.
And can I just check the, the regarding sequed, and does that include the work that we heard to incorporate the current survey of the bush mallow and wood rat nests consistent with today's conditions, not the conditions of 2009?
Yeah, and I can, I can pull and point to, so in, in the FFEIR, there are already mitigation measures in there that require pre-construction surveys be done, so they're not relying on old data.
Thank you.
I will move to adopt a resolution, the planning commission adopt a resolution finding that the certified final focused environmental impact report for the winding way project, State Clearinghouse Number 2005062052, and its addendum adequately analyzed environmental impacts associated with the winding way project, APN 049020010 and 049141660 and 670, 680 and 690, and recommending the adoption of the addendum by the city council.
I second.
Okay, I will take the roll. Commissioner Roof? Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes.
And this would be the second motion, should you choose to make it?
One, sorry, one other question, please, Lisa. There was discussion around access to drives and access for equipment to the, be able to clear out the silt around the dam, and what, where is that relevant to? Is that the master grading plan that we'll come up with in a minute, or is this here?
So I think that's more of the street improvement plans, that's not so much the master development plan. Because the master development plan only shows the actual right-of-way, the street improvement plans are the ones that include the proposed roadway and retention, retaining walls. So those, those are not included in, in this set of entitlements.
Thank you.
But just, maybe if you can give me a minute, I have a question.
Oh, sorry, you're right, Lisa's correct. The street improvement plans are included as an exhibit to this approval, so this would be a good place to include that condition. My apologies.
Right, so in this particular resolution, which is found on page 93, packet page 93, you'll see that on the exhibit to this particular resolution consists of exhibits A and B. Exhibit A begins on page 96, and at the top of page 96, you'll see that the master development plan incorporates the plan set, all seven sheets shown on the site plan, so you have, excuse me, full-size plan sets on the dais. So by incorporation, but this resolution incorporates both of those plan sets, so both the master development plan set, as well as the street improvement plans.
So essentially, most, most of the entitlements, most of the conditions of approval are in this batch, so if you have conditions, this is generally where you would put them.
Thank you. Well, we discussed hours, work hours and truck restrictions and the like. Where, where would those conditions be?
Those would be included in these conditions of approval, so those would be added to exhibit A. So exhibit A includes all of the conditions of approval tied to that master development plan, and so if the commission would like to add additional conditions of approval, they would be incorporated within exhibit A. And if this helps, I have been taking notes, so sort of what I have on my list is that there was a discussion about construction hours, limiting those construction hours to weekdays, Monday through Fridays, no weekends. There was also a discussion about construction start time, and I believe Chair Bradley had, there was a discussion about perhaps starting at 9:00 AM. The third thing that I have, well, that'll come off the table, because that can't be addressed this evening, is the dirt haul route. So I think what we would do is bring back options of the dirt haul route to the commission for your review. There-
I meant that it be nine o'clock to four o'clock, just for dirt hauling, not, not construction.
I agree. The discussion around 18-wheelers or large, large vehicles, yeah.
Okay. There was also, I think this was something that Commissioner Dugan brought up, was to have staff work with engineering and look at options for potential opportunities to address life and safety issues regarding the retaining wall on the upslope. That was another discussion, I recall. I don't know if this one made it through the rest of the commissioner's minds, but I did take note of neighborhood notification when there's a concrete pore, or during certain stages of construction. That was on the Saturday. And then that's all I have.
The gate, the gate lock, is that something we can have the, the city look into options there? For emergency access only, but more than the fire-
What I heard from the commissions interested in looking at is a, a more accessible way to unlock the gate in the event of a bona fide emergency in the area, whether it's related to fire or, or life safety emergency. So I think that would be another delegation that you'd want to authorize or have the fire marshal make recommendations on that. It's just really, it has to be in conformance with the settlement agreement, but I understand the sentiment, so I would want to work with a professional on that as well, to, to come up with a plan that would work and not violate the settlement agreement.
It would be great to have that, from my perspective, to have that be incorporated.
I think the recommended condition might be, city staff will work with the fire marshal to determine if there is a more effective way to address life, safety, and fire access through the, through the gate.
That would be good.
And then a question back for Jeff. You mentioned that the plans that we've seen and have contain the detail. Can you just verify that this, this point around maintaining access to those concrete areas are represented, captured in the plans, so that if, because therefore by reference, we've covered that point?
Yes, certainly. If you'd like to do so via condition or just via staff review.
So whatever is, is appropriate, but it seems to me it should be a condition to make sure that they're in here.
Definitely.
So when you, when the motion is considered, what we're just going to want to make, have a list of the conditions that you want to have added to, to the, to the approval of this item. I think staff's taking them down, so maybe a, when you're ready to, to make your motion and, and add the conditions, we want staff to go over them, and then have you do a straw poll to address whether that's the condition that you would want added, and then we'll have a clear record about what you're approving.
So I will do my best to read through them, and then if we need to clarify anything, we can do that and, and do it correctly. But I do have one question that I wanted to clarify before I even tried to attempt to read it. I think there was a recommendation by Commissioner Yakapony just now to ensure that certain elements are incorporated in the plans, and I didn't quite get what you were looking for. Did I, can you explain that?
Yeah, there's a specific property that has, there's two driveways, there's one driveway to the property, and another driveway that I believe the city vehicles access, to access the stormwater detention system, and so just making sure that the project does not impede those, those driveways.
And is that something that's already reflected in the plans? So my understanding would be that those plans would be revised to clarify those two conditions that we want to see, those two different driveways, one that's providing access to the property, and then one that is providing access to a storm drain, was it?
Yeah, so maybe just a simple condition that the project shall not impede access to any existing paved driveways. Could that?
Sure, if that's, sounds okay to the commission. Okay.
Lisa, did you want to try to recap those before we officially do them, or however-
Sure, why not? Let's do that, just to make sure that when I read them, they sound right to the commission. So if a motion is made to improve the master development plan, these would be the additional conditions added to that, and reflected in exhibit A. That would, first additional condition of approval would be to limit construction hours Monday through Friday. To limit truck traffic, I can't remember if that was also Monday through Friday, and then nine to four, Monday through Friday, nine to four.
Yeah, and how do we define truck traffic? I would say anything heavier than a pickup truck.
Is that okay with you? Ten-wheeler greater, okay. And then the third condition would be that staff work with engineering to determine if there's additional life sa- safety measures that could be incorporated into the design of the retaining wall, on the upslope portion of the retaining wall. There is a question by the applicant if that should be clarified by greater than 10 feet.
No, I don't think, I don't want to accept that. I think we're, it's a delegation to review the life safety, so they'll take that into consideration.
Okay. And then the next condition would be that the city work with the fire marshal to address life and, and safety, you know, fire access regarding the, the, the access gate that's required. And then the last condition would be that the street improvement plans, to ensure that the street improvement plans are modified to convey that there will be no imposition of access to existing driveways. Okay?
Maybe just mentioned, you know, a couple other additional neighbor concerns I heard, just in case you all want to consider. One of them was the location of the specific gate, in terms of, you know, if that's exactly where the existing gate is, or if it comes closer to existing parcels within city limits. So that was one concern that was raised, and then the other one was if the city wants to have a condition to repair, that the applicant has to repair Chesham if it negatively impacts it. And that might already be something that's already addressed via existing state law or public works, but just wanted to mention it.
That's probably in the grading, when we, when the grading permit comes back, I think we have a standard condition about repair of streets, and so probably that would be the appropriate place for that one. And then the, the other one was-
Gate location.
The gate location. That's already in the, in the settlement agreement, so that'll be decided by the, the fire department, essentially. So we can't change the settlement agreement, and, and I'm reluctant, again, it's the same reason I've been talking about, is that we need to leave that, that to the professionals as to where it is. And if there's an issue with the county, you know, it, it's either probably going to have to remain exactly where it is, or at the city limit line. It's probably where it's going to have to be, just based on my experience, but I think I'd feel better having the, the fire marshal chime in on where that should be, because of, of the unique considerations that they would, they're the ones who are going to need to have it in the right place, so that's why the condition is worded that way.
So I, I'm sorry.
On that truck restriction, we're saying greater than or equal to 10 tires, right? Or greater than nine? Because I think the big dump truck is 10, right? So we want to say greater than nine, I believe.
No greater than nine.
Okay. Okay. So I have a total of five additional conditions that would be added as part of this resolution.
So on that basis, I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve the master development plan, lot-line adjustment, and tree removal applications for the winding way project, APNs 049020010 and 049141660 and 670, 680 and 690. And again, specifically adding those five conditions to exhibit A.
And I will read those five additional conditions into the record. The first additional condition would be limiting construction hours to Mondays and Fridays only. Monday through Friday only. I'm sorry, I thought I said through, Monday through Friday only. The second additional condition would be to limit truck traffic, which would be defined as- as greater than nine, how do you define it, nine wheels? Thank you. Those also occurring only on Monday through Friday, limited to the hours of 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The third condition of approval would be that staff would work with engineering to determine if there's opportunities to incorporate additional life and safety measures onto the upsloping portions of the retaining wall. The next condition of approval that would be added would be that the city would work with a fire marshal to determine if there's additional opportunities for life and safety access for fire, emergency, and other emergency situations for the gate at the upper portion of Winding Way. And then the last additional condition of approval would be to require that the street improvement plans be modified to ensure that there's no imposition to access of existing driveways.
I'll second that.
And I will now call the roll. Commissioner Roof. Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan.
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes.
So this motion is a state law requirement because of the proposed abandonment of the portions of the right-of-way? You're just, you're making a finding that that abandonment conforms with the general plan, and then the City Council makes the final decision on the abandonment, correct? Lisa? City Council makes the final determination?
Correct.
This is just the general plan conformity?
I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution confirming findings of conformity with the San Carlos general plan for disposition of city right-of-way easement for the portion of Winding Way connecting to Chesum Avenue adjacent to assessor parcel numbers, APN 049-020-010 and 049-141-660, 670, 680, and 690, and terminating at city limits.
I second.
Commissioner Roof.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan.
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes.
So Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, is that if the Planning Commission decides to change the route based upon the recommendation of staff to have the route be down Chesum, left on Windsor, down Devonshire, and out of the area that way, then I think we need to renotice this item? Is that what I heard you say?
Well, what's interesting to this particular project, and this was a requirement of annexation, is that the city, excuse me, is that the Planning Commission consider what they referred to at the time as a master grading plan? So the next motion that's on the table that would need to be postponed until later date is the motion approving the grading and dirt haul certificate, but perhaps Jeff can clarify, but this has to do with all of the quantities of grading to construct the road, and it also includes some estimates for the housing, but it does not address the dirt haul route. So this one, the Planning Commission could act on, it's just the grading and dirt haul route certificate that they, that we would need to bring back to present a different route than what's contained in the packet tonight.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving a master grading plan for the construction of a portion of Winding Way connecting to Chesum Avenue adjacent to assessor parcel numbers, APNs 049020010 and 049141660, 670, 680, and 690, and terminating at city limits.
I second.
Commissioner Roof.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan.
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes.
So for this evening, that would conclude all of the motions, and I think, Greg, we would need a motion to bring, do we need a motion to bring this one back?
I don't think so, because we're going to have to renotice it anyway, so we just get, we'll just re-agendize it for a future meeting.
So that brings us to reports, correspondence, and general information.
Staff does not have any reports on recent City Council actions for you this evening, other than to say that the council will be on a recess. Is it beginning? Till the second meeting in August. They will be returning at the second meeting of August, and this is our typical summer recess that we usually call at this time of every year.
I would like to welcome and say that these new planning commissioners did an outstanding job this evening. I'm proud to work with you.
Thank you.
No.
I'll thank the public for all of the good input and helping us think through the issues that are most pertinent and finding a balanced way through.
Was there any correspondence?
There's no additional correspondence received, other than what was on the dais before you this evening.
And planning staff comments?
Yes, I just wanted to make an announcement and a reminder to the Planning Commission that on next Tuesday, July 24th, planning staff and consultants will be returning to the commission with a discussion on proposed code changes to the RS6 development standards, and the RS6 development standards refer to how the process related to how, the, excuse me, the process related to amending development standards to the single-family house size, looking at scale and massing. And this is a project that has been, we've been working on for about over a year, and we had our first study session with the Planning Commission on May 21st, and so we will be returning for a second study session on Tuesday, July the 24th. I also wanted to make mention that one of the additional items that we'd like to bring forward at that study session is to elect a member of the Planning Commission to serve as alternate on the RDRC, the Residential Design Review Committee. So typically, one member of the Planning Commission will serve on the RDRC, but because the RDRC is only a three-member committee, we have found through previous years and past experience that it's a really good idea to have an alternate. And at the last Planning Commission hearing, when your predecessors were seated here, they determined it would be best for the new commission to determine who the RDRC alternate would be, so they decided to not make a selection for that position. And again, this would just be an alternate for when the primary Planning Commission member on the RDRC is not available. And just to clarify, the Planning Commission member that is now on the RDRC is Shannon Bergman, so it'd only be for cases when she is not able to assist. So again, that's for the alternate. And I don't have any further announcements for you this evening.
Thank you all very much. Thank you for attending and your comments. Also, I declare the meeting adjourned.